Hello, everyone, and welcome to the October 12th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I need approval of the minutes for September 14, 2021. We're not roll calling anymore, are we, Mark?
I don't.
No. We're good, okay.
I move we approve the minutes of the September 14, 2021 regular meeting.
Support. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright.
I did. No, I didn't, no.
Lyndon.
Lyndon. Communications from the audience for items that are not listed as a public hearing on the agenda can come forward at this time. Alright, and new business. 897 East 16th Street. Site plan review request for a skilled nursing facility, the applicant is Eaton Flank Progressive Quality Care. So who's got this one? Applicant can come forward.
Good evening again. Craig Gangler with Dreesengun Associates, civil engineer. I am here with Aton Flank, representative for the ownership of the project. I'm going to go over some of the technical aspects of the site that you've seen on the Planning Commission. But first, actually, I'm gonna let Aton give some background to the operations of the facility. And then we can get into the boring technical stuff after that, so.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aton Flank. I'm CEO of Progressive Quality Care. That's our management company. And I'm also the managing member of Progressive Brighton, which is official legal name of the entity that's gonna be constructing the building, also known as Avenue at Holland. We have sixteen skilled nursing facility in a small piece of assisted livings in northeast Ohio. For the past eleven, twelve years, all we've been doing has been constructing brand-new skilled nursing facility, what we call the Avenue model. Avenue model is pretty much not your mom-and-pop nursing home. It's pretty much what we call a five-star hotel with some healthcare in it. It's all private rooms, private showers, you walk in. It's my mom and my wife, depending on the building. There's a Helen Building and the L Building, that's my wife and my mom, so. But it's all, all the interior is pretty much designed by them. Well, just to step backwards, we're a family business. My grandparents founded the business with some other cousins in the sixties, and then my parents' generation and my generation kinda seceded from the many cousin business and progressive is pretty much owned and operated by my dad, who's semi-retired, and my siblings. And most of our long-term management staff has been with us, some of them, over fifteen years, so. Really a family business, even though we're not a family, a family-sized business anymore. We probably have about fifteen hundred employees, if you could find them today. But yeah, throughout northeast Ohio. So again, it's, it's, well, we like to look as a five-star hotel. We have the nicest building, private rooms, private shower. Walking in the building, you're captured. We try to follow up with the quality of care, cause, you know, just, just having a nice building really doesn't help if we don't take care of our elderly. Elderly, sorry. Our average ratings, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but CMS, Center for Medicare and Medicare Services, puts five-star, puts star ratings on skilled nursing facility to measure various various things among it. Fifty percent of it would be like the annual survey that it does. Twenty-five percent would be quality points, so it depends on a bunch of measures, and twenty-five percent is staffing. It ranks it from one to five. The one and the five are typically about fifteen percent of, of your skilled nursing facilities, just because it's a comparison thing. And then the rest would be two, three, four. Typically, under three, you would have a hard time finding referrals from hospitals, cause they need to keep up their measures also. So our average in Ohio, we have sixteen buildings, I mean, one is under construction still, but the other ones that are currently open is four-point-two. So that kinda talks about our quality. Again, we have sixteen buildings. Ten of them, one of them under construction, but the other nine which are open are the Avenue models, and then we have six other ones which are what you would typically see your, your mom-and-pop building with semi-private rooms. But since 2009, all we've been doing is developing the new buildings, cause in our opinion, that's what, you know, if you wanna put a family member in a building, that's how we wanna see them. So I know you have other facilities in, in Holland, we're not trying to obviously hurt them. The state of Michigan has about two years ago done a study looking at all the counties in Michigan and determining, you know, I think it's on a five-year projection, based on the sixty-five and older, where there's gonna be a need for beds, and Holland had about, not Holland, sorry, Ottawa County had about four hundred beds that it was a need. And that's how we applied and got these certificate of needs, which are, if you look at, if you're not familiar with certificate of need, it's like taxi licenses in Ohio, in New York, I'm sorry. Where there's only a limited amount, and the government tries to not add to them, cause that's how they control the Medicaid budget, among other things. And obviously, it's also based on need, so. This project, which would be our eleventh avenue overall, is, you know, Craig's gonna talk a little bit more about the technical side of it, but approximately eighty-five thousand square feet, a hundred, all private rooms. Proximate cost, all-in, land, equipment, et cetera, is about twenty million dollars. We expect to have about a hundred twenty employees, payroll of four to five million dollars, which all be coming to the city. It will give the people of Holland some choice, if they want, you know, a nicer-style room, they'd have that opportunity. It's on 16th Street, which is in the community, is where we like to be, so that a grandkid wants to come visit his grandma, ride a bike, he's there. So that's why we love being residential, not, not in commercial, not industrial, not agriculture, because, you know, we take care of people, not of animals or, you know, commercial stuff, that's really people, so. It's kind of big what we do. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer, if not, I'll let Craig talk.
Yeah, go ahead.
You, you hit on something that we talked about in the, the study session ahead of time, and that's, you know, grandson coming to visit grandparent. And we were looking at the, the requirement for places to park bicycles. And, and the appropriate number for, for a place like this. And one of the, one of the things that I was looking at was, A, people coming to visit, and B was staffing. And how many staff members are there who might be riding bikes to work? What's your staffing level? For a facility of this size, you've got a hundred rooms?
Right, so it would, you know, obviously, the day, the day shift is where you'd have the most employees. I would say probably about, you know, and then there's, there's some change over times, depending on how you, how you schedule a shift, and then, of course, in today's labor market, everything's thrown out, and you redevelop it again, based on what you could get in terms of, you know, nursing and nurse aide staff, but. Yeah, during the day, you'd have the most, probably about forty to forty-five people, I would say.
Okay, okay.
And then various shifts and some people that'll be floating, et cetera.
And, and do you have grandchildren coming to visit their grandparents on bicycles at the other facilities that you have?
Yeah, I mean, we have some, I mean, typically, a lot, a lot, a lot more, just to be, you know, straightforward, and then a lot more would come with the parents. And what, what we actually design in some of our buildings, I mean, I tell you guys to come visit, but I don't think you wanna drive five hours, is what it took me to get here. We, we actually, we have a lot of common spaces, a lot of, we have lounges at the end of our corridors for that, those areas. We have these pop-ups, these high heads, where we'd have like, you know, within like four, six rooms, we have a bunch of chairs with like a pop-up on the top. We have a lot of light coming in, but what I'm trying to get to, we also have a playroom in every one of these buildings for the kids when they come, and they don't wanna, you know, after ten minutes they're bored, they'll go to the playroom, they'll have PlayStations, they'll have all kinds of games there that we designed. A lot of the buildings, my son, I only have one young one, all the rest are college and older, but he would always get upgraded on his game station every time we'd open a new building, cause we'd go put it in the building, and then he'd get a new one, so. Yeah, we have some, not, 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 not a lot, and I don't think we have any staff that ride their bike. For the nurse aides, we typically need to be on bus routes, or people will drive, et cetera, so.
Okay, yeah, cause one of the things that, that we're looking at, I think the minimum requirement that, that staff has told us would be four parking, bicycle parking spots. Not full parking spots for bicycles, but a place for four bicycles to park. Which the numbers, that number seemed low to me, I'm not, I'm, and if you ask me right now, what's the appropriate number? I, I'm not sure I necessarily know, or that, that Planning Commission knows that, but I think that more than four would probably be something that that Planning Commission may be looking at, in terms of that. Because not only are we looking at the, you know, how many people are riding their bikes now, we'd like to encourage people to do that. And it's kind of a, if you build it, they will come scenario. If there's only four spots there, and they're always taken, that's gonna discourage somebody from doing that. Whether it's somebody who's coming to work, or somebody who's coming to visit grandma. So I, I know that's one of the things that I'd like to see in the plan, is the opportunity for more spaces for people to be able to ride, to be able to come to visit grandma or to come to work.
I'll tell you what I did for, what we did in our latest building in Ohio, in Avenue at Lindhurst, in Lindhurst, Ohio, is we actually put, four of the parking spots have electric charging stations, that's a sign of the times, so.
Yeah, a sign of the times, both for, for vehicles and for bicycles. You know, the opportunity to charge your electric bike when you come would be a great opportunity as well. I drive an electric car, so I'm all for that. I think that's great, and I think that's, that's wonderful, and I, I'm seeing more and more people on the electric bicycles. That would be a great opportunity for them as well. But a place to be able to go, to, to put it when you get there that's safe and secure, is gonna encourage people to do those kinds of things.
Obviously, we're limited to only certain months of the year they can ride your bike around here, but.
Oh, you'd be surprised. We're hardy up here. We're not soft northern Ohio, you know, we're, we're tough western Michigan.
I did not bring my Ohio state hat, I figured it'd be a little respectful.
I am curious, how many beds do you typically have reserved for Medicaid beds, Medicaid patients?
All of our, all of our beds are duly certified in all of our buildings, so they're Medicaid and Medicare. I mean, we, what, what, what we, on the certificate of need, I can't remember what we projected to the state of Ohio, but to state of Michigan, I'm sorry, it was, I believe it was sixty-five, maybe sixty-five percent.
Okay.
Medicaid, that's, that's, that's the majority of, of the buildings. I mean, we, we don't have, I mean, our, I wanna say our, our most skilled building, which would be Medicare patients in Ohio, is probably about forty percent of Medicare.
Okay, I was just curious.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
On to the technical, correct?
I'll, I'll try to be brief. You guys will get a good summary from the staff report. Staff was very helpful. Working with Steve for the first time, both of us learning Udo. Been fairly painless. Some of the changes you may have recognized from the study session, the addition of some landscaping islands to break up some of the larger runs of parking. We did add a, a small area bicycle parking to the east of the, the main entrance there. Certainly opportunity to expand on that, should we either decide we wanna do that prior to construction, or ultimately after construction, if, if the need arises. So we can work through the project summary just briefly, I know you guys have probably looked over it, and we, we walked through it. Number of parking spaces were updated, one point two-five per patient room. Would equate to a hundred and twenty-five spaces throughout. It's a bit higher than what we originally came in with a hundred and eighteen, which was indicative from the other facilities of need. But granted, the, the one point two-five, and I know we just heard kind of how much employees we expected to have, so with a shift of forty-five, that number could be a little higher, but we didn't feel the need to come for a variance for that number. So we have increased the number of parking spaces to account for the ordinance requirement. Currently, a proposed ground sign is located south of the main entrance, it's indicated on the plan as a ground sign. There's no information provided for the looks of that sign yet, that's something we're working through with staff. Mainly due to height limitations on that ground sign, and the fact that 16th Street sits a bit higher than the site. So, you know, once we're limited on height, we're actually not that visible. On a, on a higher-speed road of 16th Street, could lead to people not seeing the sign, forcing a, a quick stop and a quick turn, that could be problematic. So we're working through some of the specifics on that, and fully intend to submit for a sign permit at a, at a later date on that. And Aton, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have a building sign at all normally? Do, on the building? Okay, we'll, we'll look to get that one permitted per the Udo ordinance as well, if, if planning commissioners would allow staff to do that review. Other, other items, we are still planning to have our water main connection up the east side of the site to service a hydrant in the back of the building, per City of Holland Fire Department requirement for fire coverage to the back of the building. Given that we're so close to a dead-end water main for the apartments to the north, serving their hydrant in the back of their site, the Holland Board of Public Works has requested that we move forward with trying to close that loop between the two sites. And so in the coming months, we will be working, we have not currently contacted the apartment complex for that, for that connection, but we would be working with them to come to an agreement to make that connection through, which would certainly improve water quality and reliability for both our site, as well as for the apartment complex. If the water main and 12th Street were to ever break, or need to be shut down for construction, they could be serviced from 16th Street. The same for our site, if 16th Street's water main was ever needing to be replaced, we would remain operational through the 12th Street's water main. So overall, better for everybody, it's just a process of permitting through the state for public water main. And that was in the works for the, the following months. Other services, power coming in through the east property line, been working with the Holland Board of Public Works to make sure everything is in line with that. We'll have a backup generator on-site, as required by the state of Michigan, for periods of time. If there is ever a loss of power, that the building would remain heated and powered as needed to keep residents safe for a determined amount of time, per the state. I believe that number is seventy-two hours. But that's all being permitted through LARA, which is the holder of the certificate of need. Other items, we submitted a photometrics plan for the site. I did not hear any comments that that did not meet the ordinance, so I assumed that everything was okay on there, in terms of light bleed-off from the, the property lines. We had a large amount of wetlands located at the southeast corner of the site that has been mitigated. We're just about through the Eagle process on that, in terms of mitigating those and protecting existing wetlands located at the northwest corner of the site, and west side of the site, which is indicated by a hatched area that would actually be put into a conservation easement, meaning that not now or not ever would that area be able to be developed, or impacted in any way. And so our site was kinda dictated on protecting that northwest corner, and doing our best to leave it, leave it alone as it is, and while doing the mitigation on the, the wetlands that were up at the top of the site, closest to 16th Street. No floodplains, landscaping, we submitted a nice-colored landscaping plan, which is on the screen. You know, some of the street trees along 16th Street, where we were discussing those sightlines. So if we need to move some of those back a little bit, we, we had already moved some back, but we're still talking with Brian White about making sure he's comfortable with with those at the driveway approaches. And then obviously, leaving the, the west side and the, the north alone as much as we can, in terms of existing trees and vegetation there, while planting other, other trees and shrubs around the other perimeters to meet the zoning ordinance there. The area in the northeast corner, which this may be in the staff report, has a twelve-foot buffer between the parking and the property line. Ordinance calls for twenty feet, we elected to put an evergreen screen there. The reason that is not twenty feet there, and it's instead twelve, was to try to get the building and the whole site away from the wetlands a bit further, to not impact the wetlands, and just keep, keep that area more natural and less impacted over there. So one of the allowable options was either an evergreen screening or fencing of some sort. So the, the parking to the northeast would be the employee parking, so with the evergreen screening there, that would be, from my understanding, acceptable to staff as an alternative for the larger buffer being reduced to twelve feet. Other, other items, unloading and loading operations, we'll have a typical food truck once a week. Rather, a full-size truck entering in through the east driveway, and that's the concrete area that you see in the north, where the trucks are doing the turning, as concrete helps preserve the pavement. Only once a week for that larger food truck. It would be the same supplier of food items for the facility every, every week. Preferably, the same driver doing the same route, so working with them, we can control to some extent where the truck's coming from, either the east or the west, when we start talking about 16th Street a little bit more shortly. And then there'll be other deliveries of smaller vehicles for medical supplies and miscellaneous other items that would be needed by the facility. Overall, not a, not a whole lot of deliveries in terms of trucks, and so. But that whole service area would be in the northeast corner there, as well as a dumpster enclosure up in there for the dumpster to be picked up by a garbage truck. And then lastly, construction schedule, I believe we're set to hopefully begin construction early next summer, if you're looking. So basically, once winter starts to end, there's obviously some clearing on the site that would need to happen. I believe the site had been cleared sometime in the past, based on the size of the existing vegetation there. There's not very many full-size natural trees, so I suspect it had been cleared in the past, but pending approval, and getting some of our other permits out of the way, stormwater permits and such. Obviously, soil erosion and everything prior to clearing the site, that would fit, current schedule would happen, certainly nothing this year on that, so. Some of the other items, on 16th Street, talking, most of our communication and, and work ongoing, and work that we still need to do involves the Transportation Department, Brian White over there for stormwater items. One of the items was shifting the, the cut-through on 16th Street. The current cut-through, which is visible on V101, which is the existing site survey sheet, is actually to the smaller parcel to the east. And so one of the items was to shift that cut-through on 16th Street, or the, the pass-through between eastbound and westbound, shift it west, so it aligns with our east driveway. And that would allow a straight connection through into the site for trucks, not needing to make an S-shaped maneuver. And also, any, any passenger vehicles that would be utilizing, let's say, eastbound 16th and making a left turn can, can come right across. Now, there's still some conversation happening with Brian, Brian White, and the traffic study that we had submitted with the project is being reviewed. I believe we've received some comments, and so we're addressing those comments and working with Brian on that for the approval of both driveways at the location shown. The last item that we're working with Brian with is the stormwater outlet. And this site in general does not currently have a very good route for its stormwater discharge. The current site, as it's undeveloped, flows out through the northwest corner. As you can see on the site plan, there's a berm north of the site, and then a berm at the northwest, and there's a little gap between those contours up there. And that's basically where the wetlands drain out through, and kind of flow along, let's say, the east property line of Holland Heights Elementary, or the west property line of the apartment complex. At that point, it continues on north, and enters into 12th Street Storm System, which is a pretty undeveloped, and it flows through a channel that goes along the, the west property line of the apartment complexes, complex. And so, talking with Brian, he's uncomfortable with that route being a primary route of basically overflow from our site. If we were to, our, our original plan, when I approached the Planning Commission two months ago now, for the study session, was that our underground detention was going to discharge at a rate less than or equal to what it currently is. While the issue is an overflow situation, if our system were to fail, then the apartments in the school are in a direct downstream path. So working with Brian, we are working with the property owner to the west, which is be the Lighthouse Group, owns the smaller piece that's vacant prior to their current office building. And then also with Holland Heights Elementary, to secure easements, to get our stormwater discharge all the way out to Hope Avenue to the west. And that would be through an enclosed pipe sized for overflow, as well as our discharge from our site. Take it all the way along the south property line of Hope, or of Holland Heights Elementary, all the way out to Public Storm Sewer in Hope Avenue. And this is a, a route that I have already reviewed with the property owner of Lighthouse Group here, and they are in favor of granting us the small section of easement on their east property line. Their hopes for that parcel was for it to always remain vacant. They purchased the property, so they wouldn't have anyone develop next to them, so they saw no reason not to give us that easement. And then talking with the facilities director for Holland Heights Elementary, he did not see an issue, but he's passing the information along to the architect that they're working with for their current bond project, cause they are doing, they have some upcoming work on the site. So I will be working with that, the architect, and with the school there to get those easements in place. And, and Brian had expressed that prior to this meeting for sure, that we explore that option, because he wanted to see that hard-piped connection out to a public system. And then certainly, the system in 16th Street was too far, wasn't deep enough for us to connect into, that's why we're in this situation here, so. I've been talking a while, so I'm sorry. I think that's it, and I think I covered everything I knew from the staff report, the traffic study, and the stormwater. Our hopes coming into this meeting was that we would be able to receive contingent approval, based off of some of these items I've highlighted. The, the work in 16th Street, basically everything with the Transportation Department, in terms of the stormwater route. We know we're not looking to build anything until next year. We do have obligations for our certificate of need. Certificate of Need to have some approvals and such prior to the end of this year, and so, we were looking to get a, a good indication of how the project was going to move forward, and I understand that the easements were a very big sticking point for Brian White to making sure that those were in the works, and I believe maybe he even said approved, he wanted to see those approved, so, granted, those are legally binding documents that get recorded, and so, but I wanted to let you guys know that I talked with both of those entities, and they are on board, but I have nothing in writing yet on those, so...
Thank you. We may ask you a few questions yet, though.
Okay.
I do have a question about the parking lot, based off of the drawing that's on the screen, I'm a little confused how the parking spaces fit in the northeast corner, and how the lines are on that drawing, because it looks like there's no driveway to the spots that are dashed.
In the center island there, in the colored?
In the north, I think it's the northeast area of the drawing, so up there, yes.
Yeah.
The, that looks like there's a skinny drive that goes kind of around, unless all that gray is concrete.
Yeah, there's the, the gray.
But there's a little island there, but then there's parking spaces as well?
Correct, yeah, the, the different hatched is the concrete, and then there is a twenty-four foot drive aisle in the asphalt that goes up, so there would be parking spaces on the north side of that concrete hatch, and then also on the east underneath there.
Okay, and you said that that piece of concrete was for any sort of delivery or services that were coming to the building?
Correct, the, the trucks doing the maneuvering, you know, turning their wheels in place would tear up the asphalt, and so, by doing that, it's just less maintenance for the facility to have to not replace that so often.
Okay.
And I think that's a, that's a, that's a request directly from the Facilities Director that manages other, other facilities, and so, same thing with the concrete entrances at the drives, it's a, it's a maintenance thing, you know, keeping it as, as high quality as we can for as long as possible.
It just looked like there wasn't any access to those parking spaces.
Yeah.
But there's concrete there, so that makes a lot more sense now.
Yep.
Also, would it be possible to do maybe just one curb cut to the facility?
Based on the requirements of the fire marshal, that was not desired, certainly I think that would be desirable for us, keeping the eastern driveway, but that would be up to the fire marshal, and he had indicated they wanted two points of access, as well as, as you can see, the, the extra fire, fire lanes around the north that extend over, and then also on the southwest that extend up and around, it gives him more access, or his department more access to get around the building.
Mark, doesn't MediLodge only have one entrance?
I believe they do.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if this was a change. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have a microphone. I don't. Speak up, there, so, the fire code may have changed in the ensuing years, so I think the old MediLodge, that's been there for, I probably want to say seven, eight, ten years, so...
Yeah, it's been different names, so, yeah, okay.
It's also a much smaller building than ours, and ours has all private rooms inside our building.
Is it a smaller building?
Yeah, MediLodge, seventy-seven rooms, and they're not, they're...
Seventy-seven at MediLodge?
They're not private, some of them aren't.
Okay. I'd be curious to know what that, that requirement change was, if it was a change.
We, we can certainly look into that, so I, I know firsthand from my, my father was at the old MediLodge. Ah, thank you, Rick.
I know firsthand from visiting that facility a number of years ago, that, I mean, the place is, it's not busy, okay, so, requiring a second driveway due to traffic congestion issues or whatever, it just, it's, it's not really warranted, so, but we can certainly, Steve and I can certainly follow up with the fire marshal here, and if, if that's a fire code requirement to have a second driveway, well then, then they're gonna have to put it in, I would presume, so...
Right, or if it's a width issue and one entrance, or whatever.
Yeah.
For vehicles, okay.
And to expand on the, the fire code, the building is fully sprinkled, as well as built into separate areas, correct, with the doors that can open and shut?
Firewalls, yeah.
Yeah, firewalls, and so isolating of the building, you know, overall, very compartmentalized and safe, so...
Any other questions from commission members for the applicant? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, is there anything you needed to add?
I don't think I speak.
Or Steve?
I might try to add a couple things.
The new guy is gonna add a few things.
Certainly.
Why not? Thank you. So maybe just a couple real quick that haven't been touched on, or maybe some clarifications. I did point out in the staff report, one of the things on the site was that it was actually including onsite daycare for the employees, so, you know, that is additional use, but it's not a, it's not a use to the public, so that's something simply for the employees. They are meeting all of our requirements for setback purposes, I did note in there the height of the building is twenty-eight feet, just to make sure we're all talking about the same thing, that's to the height of the, sort of the midpoint of those couple kubelos that they have, so, you know, the building will look a, a little bit even shorter than that. We've talked a lot about the stormwater, again, I, I guess I just wanted to repeat, our engineer was pretty emphatic that he wanted to see those approved documents prior to us granting any kind of approval. It's already been mentioned, but our ordinance does allow those other alternatives for a, a setback of only twelve feet, or something under twenty feet, so that's already been mentioned, that isn't something that's an exception or anything, that's just another option that our ordinance does allow for. And then again, in regards to the traffic engineering, I guess I would just summarize it and say the traffic engineer has not approved the traffic study at this point, so, we certainly will check with the fire department, but in terms of exactly what that access would look like right now, we don't even really have a final answer for the, from our own traffic engineer from the study yet, so, that certainly does need to be addressed. Lighting has been talked about, I did mention in the report that light poles themselves, they're using some light poles and just some small bollards to light up the site, that certainly does meet our requirements, and the light poles themselves are under twenty feet, we've already talked about bicycle parking, and, and to be honest, I guess I am looking for some direction from you two about how you guys, you know, want to handle bicycle parking for this site. Some of the things that have been addressed already, and it has been mentioned, some of the trees that are in the right-of-way along Sixteenth Street have been pushed back onto private property to account for some clear vision, that's already been addressed on the plan that you have, in the plan that's on the screen tonight, so, I gave you, I guess what I would describe as probably your normal list of conditions that you typically see in the staff report, so if you, you know, were inclined to grant any approval, I guess I wanted those in there, but the staff recommendation is that you table the, this matter for another month to let them address these couple large outstanding items, so, again, maybe how you handle your tabling, but my recommendation was to hold the public hearing, keep that open, that way if we had additional comments from neighbors in November, we could continue with that at that time, so, recommendation was to table this until the November meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions from commission members?
Yeah.
Yeah. You mentioned there's daycare onsite?
Yeah.
Is there like a play area for the kids?
Yeah, so there is, it's up in that sort of northeast corner.
Is it the red mark?
And, and it's right here, and where that cursor is, is their actual little outdoor play area. I know it's going through the plans, it's probably hard to pick up, but it's on their, it's on their floor plan of the, of the site as well.
I was just talking with friends of mine about how, if employers had onsite daycare, how much easier it would be for families and, and people to stay at work, so I commend you for having that in that plan, that's really awesome.
We have so many single moms.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of employees looking for daycare, and having it onsite is awesome.
And it's also great, we put a window between the daycare and the seniors, so they both actually...
You come to the mic?
Sorry.
That's okay.
We actually put a window between like the daycare and the resident area, so that it's actually good for both populations, for the kids to see the adults, and for adults to see the kids, it's really great. This is our third, we haven't actually opened one yet, we just finished constructing a building, and one more is being constructed, so, I have information, but I know other groups in Cincinnati have done that, and it's been excellent, so, we figure with the labor issues, and that's probably one of the best ways to help solve it.
That's awesome, definitely awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. This does require a public hearing, and at this time, I will offer for anyone from the public to come forward on this item. Seeing as there's no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing.
Do you want, do you want to keep the public hearing open?
Oh, I'm sorry, I will keep the public hearing open.
And I, I would move that we table this item until the November ninth meeting.
Okay, any support for that?
I'll support.
Support? Mark, would you like to do a roll call for the item?
I think just a simple voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. No? All right, so the item is tabled?
Yep, I just have one other comment to make, and it was in regard to, to staff's question about some guidance from us in regard to bicycle parking, I don't have an exact number, but I think that if we're looking at forty staff there, to assume that maybe one in ten staff members may ride their bicycle there, that's four, and another four for a family that may be visiting, I don't think eight's unreasonable for that, I'd, you know, the more, the more the better in my mind, but I think that eight is a, is a decent number, I don't know how the, how other commissioners feel about that.
I would, I would say that since they increased a few more of the parking spaces in general, that there would be space for four more bicycle parking as well.
Mm-hmm.
Is that good, Steve?
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Any other comments? No? All right, thank you applicants for coming, it was a great presentation, we look forward to hearing more, have a good night.
Thank you.
And, the next item on the agenda, communications and petitions, scheduling of public hearings, there are none, communications from commission members? Communications from staff? Is this the first time Steve's been to a planning commission meeting?
It is.
Okay.
So, yes, I can do that formally, so...
Okay.
We're very pleased to, to announce and kind of formally introduce Steve Peterson to the Planning Commission and to the Greater Holland Community, so, Steve is on board, been on board, and I think this is your fourth week?
Fourth week.
Yep, so, he is our new senior planner, and he hails from, lives in Granville, but had been working for twenty, twenty-five years for Cascade Charter Township over in Kent County, so, we're just pleased as punch that he said yes to coming and, and working for us and doing, uh, doing the planning work, so Steve is gonna be the, the primary person, primary staff person driving the planning pro, program, glad that he's a real veteran, he'll be able to dig in and hit the ground running, and he's, he's been doing so, so, very happy that he's here.
Great, welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right, motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
And support?
Support.
All those in favor, say goodbye.
Bye.
Goodbye.